Oh, no, I appreciate that. I was like, I'm so grateful that it stuck.
Yeah.
And it's nice and stuff, but it's like six thirty. I wish you'd step on it. I started going seven. I was like, oh, this is too early. Well, I know.
Because this was off. It's on. It's on. That button had gotten pushed off.
We're good. Whenever you're ready.
Well, I know.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order at, uh, Sunny Keena, we apologize for the delay we were having. But the town attorney, if we could all rise for the questions. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of this land. One nation, united in its own right, with liberty and justice for all. Now. Um, okay. That was the hour, if anybody was wondering what that was. Um, we are here, we have one item on the agenda, uh, discussion possible action on authorizing the town clerk to establish explanatory text related to the referendum question scheduled to be voted on September seventh, twenty twenty five, in accordance with the recommendation of the board of select. Uh, Will did provide a draft uh, of an explanatory text which you guys have in front of you. And then I believe there's an extra copy. Do you need a hard copy?
Uh, sure.
There you go.
And this was part of the reason why I was delayed. I didn't actually get to sit down with it until almost five thirty. Uh, just the way that they went and I thought there might be an opportunity to address, to go a little further in explanation. And I met with the town clerk, uh, when I was here earlier today, saying that my thought would be that the board could make a recommendation. So ultimately, the statute gives the right for the town clerk to draft the explanatory. That's why he drafted this. But I thought the board may want to send its recommendation on what the words would include. And then, uh, ultimately, it would be his decision, as long as it's neutral, that's all that matters. But in thinking of this, since the ultimate referendum question is not per se identical, maybe you might want to explain through this process. So I, I started working on that and then I ran out of time. I said, I have to get in the car. So, uh, what I'll do is I'll give, you know, give you this and I'll give you this. Uh, and I took, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, you know, we can look at it on, on here also. Uh, but, uh, my thinking was, I took the clerk's rec, uh, language. And then I kind of explained the process. Uh, residents of the town uh, filed a petition asking the following question. The board, on its own initiative, removed the question from the call to send it to referendum. But the board expressed some concern that the question be, uh, have clarity to avoid voter confusion. You know, in other words, kind of to explain the reason why it's not verbatim.
Isn't that, is that what's up here? Talks about the timeline?
Well, it does, but it's from a process standpoint. You know, you, you remove it from the call, right? And if someone's thinking to themselves, well, why is it different? Right? So if you lay it out uh, saying this was the question. And then if they can, this way they can compare the two questions. It's not substantially different. I would say you did not change the question. You provided clarification within the question, right?
I think I would agree with that, I think.
Right? It's because substantively, it's well, if the question says, shall the town run a before and after school program? What was it running? It was running in accordance with state law, an unlicensed, unregulated program, right? So they're substantially similar. It's just one clarifies.
Right.
So I would use the word, what this board decided to do was to add some clarification to the question. And it, and it was not a change, uh, of, of the question. I'm sure people will disagree.
You know, it's interesting because I actually haven't thought of it that way either, but I think what you're saying makes sense.
Right?
Yeah.
So, and if you think about the two questions, they are substantially similar because what, if we vote to say yes, we should run a before and after school program, it would be what it was. Right? And what it was, was in accordance with state law, unlicensed and unregulated because municipalities are exempt. So, uh,
I mean, this is, this is information, the, how the board voted and stuff, but it's, I don't know, it's not really explanatory text and it, I'm coming to vote and I don't understand the question.
Well, this was just, this, this is just explaining the, you know, a little bit of the process.
Can you, in this, in your submission, can you just tell me where the explanatory text starts?
Well, I didn't, again, I wouldn't.
It's not this, right? This is.
No, so what I did is I took the clerks.
Okay.
All right. And basically, I was going to use the entire, entirety of the clerks and just infuse from a timeline standpoint, you know, and that's why I ran out of time and I said, I have, it was.
Wait, wait, so you, you're saying add all of this?
Well, it, basically, this is the clerks. All right. It's, it's identical to the clerks.
You've added these, all these paragraphs.
I added the question, which he has there.
Right?
And then, and then, and then what I added is the paragraph, unlike commercial childcare businesses, uh, Connecticut state law exempts, and I say, does not require childcare services run by municipalities from licensing requirements.
It's like along the topic of, that's basically
Right.
A different way of wording that.
Right. And, you know, again, it's because there are two types of organization, you know, childcare organizations, right? There are commercial ones which are licensed. And then there's a whole plethora of.
I think this is a lot.
Well, yeah.
I think it's a lot.
The thing is, I looked at some other towns and they're trying to explain to people, especially if there's a lot of legal lease in the question because it involves bonding or something like that, that then they, they just come down to like, what if somebody, they know what they want, but then they're like, I don't even know, should I vote yes or no? And it kind of puts in simplistic language, if you vote yes, the town is authorized to purchase the fire engine, for example. If you vote no, but the stuff may have, the question may have stuff about other financing.
My, yeah, my only concern was.
It doesn't get into the history of.
Well, and my only concern was.
The other stuff.
Seven dash seven says you can remove a, the question from the call. So for the, the, for the individual who says, well, but you didn't just remove it, you added some words. Why'd you do that? You know, I might have confusion. Why did the board do that?
Well, but that, that's not confusion about what the question that they're voting on.
Well, but they may say, maybe I shouldn't be voting on this question. I should be voting on the other question.
Remember, these are, it sounds like in the, in the statute, this is something that like basically there's posters you see on the way in to vote.
Yeah.
Um, and I, apparently, there was one done for the, the, the fire burn building or whatever. And I don't remember seeing it because, I mean, if you don't know how you get a vote, you don't have to look at the posters. But if you've got too much stuff on there, no one's gonna.
No, no, it's too, I think this is a lot. I mean, I, I.
Can I ask a question with this information? Like, we have the town meeting on Thursday.
Yes.
Can this information be shared at the town meeting?
It was already.
It would, it would be the, whatever you, the clerk ultimately.
I mean, I mean, if, if it was decided that the, whatever the town clerk originally sent was to be the explanatory text, but could we have the information about the process available?
Whatever they want.
So what the clerk did was, the top portion was something that is just historical boilerplate. The bottom portion was what I had said in my email. Right? So that was what I originally kind of suggested as the explanatory text. And as I, as I'm sitting, thinking about it, I said, might there be someone, because you know, there's going to be questions all over the place. And do you want to, you're not, this is not going to be a three-page document. There was to be a page and a half. You know, uh, so, uh, and so if you're doing it on a poster, it's going to be a, you know, one poster that's simply going to say, the board removed it uh, and modified the question to add clarification. And, you know, that was the substance. And then, uh, then added, what I was going to do then add is, if you vote yes, you know, if you vote no. And so that was, that's what's going to be how it was going to end. So, uh, the only thing I added to the clerks was process for clarification and, and, uh, total inclusion. It's ultimately your recommendation to the clerk and the clerk will likely follow your recommendation. So whatever you want to include, it was something I just wanted to put out there for you to think about. Uh, if you disagree, that's your right.
No, I thank you for your explanation. I do, this feels like a lot because I think that the explanatory text statute isn't about explaining every process or what right the board of selectmen have. I, I know that there's been confusion about that in town, whether or not the board of selectmen has a right to do certain things. But I don't think the explanatory text is the place to explain certain things like what power do we have and things like that. Um, so I think this is a lot.
But we, but we.
Because I, I think that if the explanatory text, if the purpose is to explain what people are voting on, I think this is a lot. I think it's a lot.
Well, again, it's, I would hope, uh, that, you know, a page and a half is not too much. Uh, but when you're, because particularly when you're spreading it out, I mean, the, the, if you really look at it, the first half of the first page is the history of, you know, is in statutory reference, the substance of explanation is, if you look at the clerks, is at the bottom, right? Here's, here's your question. Explanation. If you wrote yes, this. If you wrote no, this.
Right, what's that? Okay.
Yes, right. That's, that's the explanatory portion.
Oh, so would that be added to here?
That would just be, basically, that would be the end. So you're, uh, it's, it's substantially similar. It's just, it's laying out the petition question to say, the petition was filed, this is what they asked for, because is there going to be confusion? I don't know. Uh, not in the ultimate question, but in, well, why am I voting for this if I don't think the selectmen have the ability to do it? Why am I voting for this? And so you're just laying it all out.
I, I mean, I, I really think those are separate and distinct, though. I think the, the, we can go on for ten pages or twenty on what power we have.
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this an unfinished thought?
It is. Because I had a time and I didn't want to be here.
All right. Because I'm just trying to make sure that I, so basically, the, if you vote yes, if you vote no, would come
Basically, right there.
At the very end of this.
Right. So you're, you're ultimately adding a half page.
So this is going in between
Yes, ma'am.
The ballot question and the if and yes. Okay, so that's where.
Just to kind of explain how we got here. Uh, and again, if you don't want to.
I'm just trying to.
Can we talk about the stuff that the town clerk had sent? Um, so my comment, do you guys have the, that one?
This one paper.
But it's, none of it's, none of it's wrong. Uh, I'm just wondering, because you take the first thing, the first sentence, and then it says, uh, you want, vote yes, town run before national, and then comment to operate in accordance with state law, not licensed or regulated. Then the last line, current state law does not require municipally operated to be licensed or regulated. It kind of says the same thing. I would take, I would shorten this sentence and just move this as a second.
Describe what sentence is you're talking about.
Uh, you know, not, not definitely with suggesting maybe, maybe just say something like, if you vote yes on the question, you want a town run before and after school childcare program, period. Next line, immediately after that, in like the same paragraph, current state law does not require, probably say town run, just because, or town, just to be consistent. In case anybody is in a municipal, I mean, town run before and after school runs to be licensed or regulated by the state. So you're not repeat, you know, repeating the language.
And that's the question. It's, it's always interesting when.
And I think the second part, the no is.
How many people know?
That this is why we wanted, this is why we wanted to know.
Well, but that's the thing is, people don't. How many people know that your town-run childcare is different from kinder care? Or, you know, a, a.
No, no, I didn't know.
No, that's the point.
Yes.
Is, is, is to add the clarity, uh, and do you want to, should it be at the bottom or?
Again, I was just suggesting that.
Right.
As, because it seemed like we've got the idea here and down here.
Well, right. So.
Can I ask you something that I think is, um, just to add to what you said? Um, if you end the first sentence there, if you vote yes, you want a town run before and after school program. If you vote no, you, oh, no, then you go to the last one. Current law, I want to talk about the last sentence for a second. I have a question. Current law, current state law does not require town run, um.
So just.
Program.
I don't think that's placed right. I don't think that's in the right place.
Well, I'm just trying to, he said, he had comments, I just want to add to his comment. I think that one thing that's missing is the idea that people might also not be aware of that. Because I, this, to some people, might sound like there's some kind of prohibition, like towns are not allowed to.
Exactly.
And so how do you, like, I think that's missing here.
Well, that, and that's why I added, I hate not having a touchscreen. I'm sorry.
That's why it does not require town run before and after school programs to be licensed or regulated by the state.
The idea that they could be, no, the idea that they could be regulated and licensed.
Require doesn't mean mandate.
I think, I think there's an idea with these questions that if you, that towns can't be licensed or regulated if they want to. The idea that like towns are excluded from the licensing process from the state.
They're exempt. So why, why would you do something if you're exempt?
Oh, so instead of saying, does not require, current state law exempts before and after.
So that's why.
Licensing regulation.
No, but that's, language is confusing too, because it might lead some people to believe that the town is not able to get licensed, even if they want to.
So, and that's where, do you want to, so go back, just go back to my sheet for a moment.
Okay.
All right. So the ballot question will be as follows. Go to, start there.
Okay.
And then, okay, so that's your question.
Okay.
And now you go into some explanatory. Now, I'm not saying this is your words, but unlike commercially-run childcare programs, comma, Connecticut state law does not require municipally-run uh, childcare programs, uh, to be licensed and regulated, right? Uh, this is ultimately an option of the town.
It doesn't say that, though.
No, I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm worth speaking here with you.
Okay, okay.
Just because I'm listening to what you're saying.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I hear you. I hear you. And so I'm trying to say, what do we want to convey to the voter? We want neutrality, facts, and clarity, right? So there's a difference here. We have entities that must be licensed. And we want to tell people, but, and it's not just municipalities. It's, you know, boards of education, it's, it's parachuted, it's, there's a whole list of exempt entities. But we'll, we'll just focus on towns because that we're talking about.
Certain small daycare, certain small ones are.
It depends on the size.
Right.
Right? Uh, so, and it depends on whether that's a parent or whether the children, so there's a whole bunch of, it's nineteen eighty-seven kind of. And I think you may even want to list that. You know, not, not give them a copy of the statute, but let them give it, get information. If they want to look, then look. Uh, and in that two sentences or three sentences, you kind of draw the comparison. And you explain it. And then you add, if, so if you vote yes, you know, then you are voting in favor of the town running a before and after school program, uh, as it historically has, you could say. Or, you know, that is unlicensed and unregulated. Uh, if you vote no, what, I don't know what that means, because they may not want any program. Right? I just don't want the town to have a program, whether it's licensed or not.
But that's, I think the no, the, the, the effect of the vote no is, is accurate. If you vote no, you do not want a town run before and after school program at this time. Right?
Well, I don't know. Maybe I want it to be licensed.
Time need to be part of that sentence?
Well, I'm just saying that's.
Because at this time seems a little.
Well, but maybe I want it to be licensed.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not.
But that's what I'm saying, no, no, doesn't give you your answer, right? Because I don't know why.
It explains this question.
Part of the question.
Explains what the effect of this question.
Sentence.
You wrote on this.
Like, it should just end at.
Right, so it, so, right. Since you haven't added a second question, right? Because you, you could have said, shall the town run a before and after school program that is licensed? Right? And then you would have had a separate question and a separate, so you're right. So the answer here is no, the answer, you know.
And then, you're right, at this time.
That's like a.
Added in, it doesn't.
It should end at program, period.
The time of the vote sort of applies to all of them, right?
Yeah, so you just put a period at it.
So I would take out, at this time, see, it should come off.
That simplifies.
So what, what are your thoughts on, I mean, it's not really wrong, but it's to say, if you vote yes on this question, you want a town run before and after school childcare program to operate in accordance with state law, but not licensed or regulated by the state. I think that's confusing.
So why don't you just say, you know, if you vote yes.
So I was thinking just.
So take off by the state because it's already said in accordance.
Period.
Just after program and then, then potentially either leave it where it is or move the, the thing, the thing, we may still have to play with the wording of this last sentence if, if requires not right. But you guys agree with putting a sentence.
After program?
After program.
For the yes sentence?
Yeah. I just don't like.
Well, but let's say yes for now and move on so we could hear your other thought on the.
Well, I was just saying, I, it, it was like, it seemed like the first sentence and the last one repeated the same information.
Right.
Um, so if we put the period there, then we either leave the current as the third sentence or move it up and make it out of the first sentence.
I think the intent of that was to explain the fact that municipalities do not.
Are not.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to explain.
So I think you want to put that ahead of the questions, right? Because.
Put it before the yes and no?
Yeah.
It could, it could be.
So move the.
Because it's, it's, you know, current law says you don't have to be. If you vote yes.
This is.
This is what you're going to get. If you vote no, then you don't want.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
If I went fast, I need to.
Move, uh, I'm just.
This three.
Move this one before the yes and no. Just put that one and then end this one at program, the yes sentence at program.
That's what we're talking about, at least.
And then this middle one is out?
No, 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 that stays.
Okay.
We're just moving this one before the yes and no sentences.
And that way, the yes and no are easy. And then, and then we just have to make sure we're happy with the language of the.
Current state.
Which was really what our note was trying to, to come up with in the, in that town meeting call.
Current state law does not require, I, I put town operated, I just put, I just changed the word town. What did you have?
I wrote town run.
Yeah, just to be consistent with the other ones.
Town run, okay.
Town run or town operate.
Um, what does it say in the other one?
Everything's.
It says town run, so, okay.
It was a simpler word.
Okay, but these, this text does still not convey the fact that a town can be licensed if they choose to. That that's not in here, like it's lost.
Add that, so it says, does not require it, which is accurate. Do you, I don't know whether it's true, but I have heard at recent meetings, people say that they can, uh, get voluntary licensing, uh, voluntary licensing.
Is that, should that be part of this or should that be part of the conversation on Thursday?
Again, it's, it's, if you look at the statute, it's, it exempts municipally run.
Right. And so people hear that and they say, we're not allowed to get licensed, but towns can pursue licensing.
Well, if you're exempt, it means you're not subject to the law. It doesn't mean you don't, you're not gonna, don't have, you don't have the ability to subject yourself.
You can if you choose.
Right, if you choose to.
Right.
Right, right. Um, and so.
Because any childcare program, whether licensed or not, can choose to have higher standards than the standards that the state imposes on people, right?
It always goes strictly.
Any program could say, we want the best for these kids, right?
We've always started to, Gina, just so you know, we have already started to investigate that. Um, as much as the state, and I know Don and Jen have both reached out and have spoken to two different people at the state and have gotten pretty much the same answer that has basically said, you could become licensable, but towns are not a priority right now. Because they already know per state law that we're exempt.
Yeah, so they're short-staffed, they have to put it as a prior.
But not a priority.
Of the, of the state.
Yeah, but it's not about the state. This is about the town.
Understood. But we've already reached out to figure out what, what are the standards and how that we.
Almost a year. If we're talking about calls that were made recently, I mean, I, I just would, I'd prefer to focus on the language and the work we're doing here today because any kind of information that you're getting.
Share on Thursday.
Like recently, yeah, for, you know, I mean, I just.
Somebody said at a recent meeting that they're looking into licensure, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting that in as fact.
Ultimately, the town has to decide what it wants.
That's something that can be shared on Thursday.
That's the, whatever the facts are.
Yeah, whatever, whatever. Yeah, absolutely.
And it does make sense what you said about, if they don't have enough staff, they have to focus on.
What they're required to, to, to do. Right, exactly.
It may have been different if the town started making those calls in June of twenty twenty-four instead of, you know.
What do you, so what do you guys think about this?
Twenty twenty-five.
Now, but ultimately, it's a, it's a question for the town.
It is a question for, I'm just, I'm just saying that any, you know, I'm here at a meeting, I don't have any concrete information on what was said or not in these phone calls. And so it's not information that I could use, you know.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to your.
Yes. No, thank you. I know, I see what you're doing. I appreciate it.
I don't want to put something in here that might not be accurate.
Well, so, so we, what do we know? We know, again, the average person, we got to kind of, the average person is unlikely to know. Because we didn't know, right? Because, because we have no reason, even if you had a child in this program.
Yes, exactly.
You, you know, this was just a childcare service that had been in existence for a couple of decades. Uh, or longer. Uh, right? And it was, I don't know, I'm looking, were you in it?
I was going to say, no, because, uh, they didn't used to have any, then J C C was running it, then the, the town kind of evolved into it. I'm going to guess fifteen years ago.
Okay, so, so a decade and a half, you know, so, and it just existed, so, but the average person is not going to know licensing regulations. You're just going to know my kid's having a good time, my kids, I believe safe, my kids, yeah, so they're not going to know compliance, not going to know anything. So, and there's probably not a meaningful difference when I brought my kid to kinder care. It was a bunch of kids in a room. I bring my kid here, a bunch of kids, so it's, you got adults, you know, supervising childcare providers. And you don't know the difference of compliance laws, regulations. So that's the point here, is to, how do we bring some information that is concise? But conveys the point that the question is asking, should we reinstate, really, should we reinstate the program that we had?
Basically.
Right? And, uh, it's not, it's not asking, do you want it to be licensed or do you want it to be what it was?
Right.
So, uh, that's why I had kind of went to, how do I convey this? Say, well, we got commercially-run programs and we got municipally-run, right? Uh, the town is not subject to the same standards as the business sector, you know? People might start understanding that. Uh, well, why not? Well, for a lot of reasons. Because it's in a public building, it's not in a private house. You know, but we don't have to get into the, the, the reasoning, but the, there, but it's because it's more open and, and, uh, be, you know, and it's done by a government or, or a subpart of the state.
Or the legislature just hasn't gotten around to it.
Well, they, they consciously made a decision to exempt it. They could have just.
Some point.
But they have, they have raised this issue, though.
No, of course. And there's legislation that, to, to remove it and, but they made a conscious decision when they enacted the law to take us out.
Right.
Uh, yeah. And we could look at the legislative history as to the discussion on it, but.
And we don't have to.
And we don't have to.
Not tonight.
But, but, but the point is, how do we let the voter know? And maybe the point is having this conversation and letting them listen to it, right?
Yeah.
And, and maybe they were doing a service by doing that. Say, there's really no way for us to get the, the, the language perfect. Because no, everyone's going to read it slightly different, you're right? So it's, it's got to be part of a conversation uh, at the town meeting, maybe an explanation at the town meeting. You know, maybe, you know, something in, in writing, two or three sentences. Uh, but the only way, in my mind, to draw the comparison is there are entities that must be licensed. And it, but the town's not like that, you know, and.
Right, but I think you, I, I'd like to finish that thought, like certain entities must be licensed, right? No doubt. They cannot operate unless they're licensed. Other entities are exempt. They don't have to be, but they could be. And that could be part is, is missing from this text. And, um, and I, you know, I mean, I'd like to do two things. I'd like to think about if we add something like that, what would it look like? And then reexamine the question to see whether or not we actually need clarity.
Do, or go back to the petition.
Just to, just to look at the question.
Right. So, all right, so let's go to your question, uh, if you vote no. If you vote no, you're either do not want the town to run an after-school or before and after-school program, or you believe the town should consider being licensed or be licensed, right? I mean, you could change the no up that way.
Right.
Right? To give it one or the other. Uh, because if I vote no, I'm voting because I don't, don't want it at all, or I want it to be licensed. So maybe you bring clarity in, in, at that point.
I think we need to keep this simple. And I think, I think the conversation needs to be had on Thursday at the town meeting, because then the town can also have input with questions.
Um, Yeah, there's a lot of new ones.
That they, they want clarification on.
Talk about, I think there was a newspaper article with the state, you know, there's way more bills introduced than there are passed each year. But there was some kind of at least partial regulation in town, but that's not, that's not appropriate for.
Right, because it hasn't happened yet.
If you don't, right, but if you don't have open dialogue to just flush it around.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then you don't get to your.
Right.
You know, so that's why we're having this discussion, is just to make each other think.
I think that's great.
Right.
Yeah.
That's the only, that's the only point, uh, is to say.
I, I like Paul's suggestion of keeping it simple.
I think with the changes that we made on this one.
The only time people really pay attention to it is, as you walk, if it's on a poster, as you're walking into the voting thing, it's gotta be pretty basic, yeah.
But I, I like, I like the changes that we did make about moving that sentence up.
Yeah.
Before the yes and no, and shortening those two sentences at the word program.
So where we are now is, first sentence, current state law does not require a town run before and after school childcare programs to be licensed or regulated by the state. Period. If you vote yes on the question, you want a town run before and after school childcare program. If you vote no on the question, you do not want a town run before and after school program, period.
I, I still think that there's some confusion here though, because I understand the yes and no sentences, but having the. The other question be the introduction, right, the first, current state law does not require town run before and after school. Childcare programs to be licensed or regulated.
By the state, right?
So that sentence could lead some people to conclude that the town cannot be regulated or licensed, even if they want to. I really, I really think that.
Require means mandate versus.
I, I think that it would be easy for.
And I think the problem we had is like, I, I was thinking like, okay, we ran another sentence, like towns can be voluntary, but I don't think we have. That definitive information and.
Well, you can always.
You think that a town cannot be licensed if they choose to?
Well, I mean, we just heard that there were some conversations that they could become, what'd you call it, licensable?
Licenseable.
Like you could, you could follow the criteria, but if they don't have the time or ability to issue you a license.
I don't, I don't know, I think there are, there are towns that have licensed programs, so I don't know why some towns would be.
I mean, if you could contract out, if, if I could enter a, enter into a contract, that contracts away my statutory right. Right? I just can't violate the law.
Right.
I can subject myself to the law if I'm exempt, and I think that's the point here is, but. What is the que, like, maybe we go back to, what is the question asking, right? So we had a petition that was filed by a, a group of residents that wanted a question to be considered. Right? So we should try to, uh, give respect to that question. And say, you know, this was not a question that was born out of this body, it was born out of that group. And they wanted. I think, if I'm reading the question, should the town reinstate? The historically operated program, right? The way, if you read the question, that's the way it's, it's kind of, I interpret.
Right, I think so.
So, right, it wasn't getting into the licensing issue, it wasn't getting, and I think you're right. We could, as a municipality, say, well, we wanna be better. We don't wanna be exempt, because we wanna have protocols in place, you know, and we wanna put safeguards in place. But I had be, by being subject to.
We want a third party to monitor what we're doing, so.
Maybe they'll never monitor us.
No, I'm just saying that, that, you know, if you're pursuing.
Right, but that's right, but that's a question. That's why I said at the last selectmen's meeting, well, you know, you can look at this as saying, put it out the way the question, the petition was presented. And then administratively, have the conversation, all right, we've now got it in place, if it was voted yes. Well, you know what, as, as a policy, this board wants to initiate the conversation of saying, let's advance. Towards licensing, because we feel it should be licensed. We feel we need to start taking steps, so we're going to administratively, the policy question is answered by the referendum. The administrative question is, how are we gonna operate this now? Well, you address it at the board and then bring it back to the town meeting in the future, say, all right, we got this program, and it's this board's recommendation. That it be licensed, right? Uh, cause I think that's an administrative function, not necessarily a policy question, uh, you know? And it depends on, because it's how am I gonna run this? Am I gonna run it administratively, subject to the licensing requirements? Or am I gonna run it without? So, you know, you know, that's a hair that I'm splitting.
But this is, this is what the question is.
Right.
If the question passes, the park and rep department is authorized to run the before and after school program.
In accordance with state law.
And they do not have to become licensed or regulated. And I think you'd maybe had suggested that at a previous meeting, and I was just totally thinking, well, I'm not, it like, so this passes, I'm not gonna throw up. I would certainly suggest, I think it's a good idea if they pursue licensure, or if they can't get licensure, they. Try to, it's probably, we'll like, agree with that, but I wouldn't impose that as an additional step, because this vote would have said, they don't have to.
Well, but, well, okay, but it's, it's, you had, as a board, you have, you may say, again, you may say nothing. Or you may say, that's not good, as a board, we don't think that's good enough. We, you know, we think that we need to take extra steps. And.
Well, we could recommend.
And working administratively with the department director and the commission to.
Yeah, or you could sit back and say, the town meeting spoke, the town spoke.
But we, we could not mandate it after this vote. You know, it, it.
But it could be a recommendation.
People vote no, right?
No, no, they go, yeah.
They go yes and this passes.
And then, and then, um.
Okay.
We, we can't say, now we're, now we're imposing a new requirement, you can't, until you become licensed.
If they vote yes, then they're authorized to proceed.
That doesn't, right, that doesn't mean. Licensed or not, it's, it's, it's out of our hands, it's, you know what I mean? So we could make recommendations.
Right, that was the point.
I think we need to fo, yeah, we need to focus.
But if the vote is said, if they said no, then there could be a discussion about get licensed and run your program, right?
Right, exactly.
We just would know how long that would potentially.
It, it wouldn't matter if they vote no, it's not, you're not gonna have the program, right? So. But I mean, if it takes twelve months, it takes twelve months, it's because that was the vote.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So time is not a factor, because the people spoke.
For families who need the service, it is a factor.
Well, but not, you're subject to the vote.
Well, then every, the families are focused on it, then they all.
If, um, i- i- if the, um, if, if the people vote not to, not to allow the, uh, town run program, then. That presumably the town would pursue alternatives if there were any available.
Right.
Why?
To serve the families that need childcare and all.
Well. The park and rep department wouldn't be offering, you know, but the town could try to facilitate another operator.
Well, you could, but that was done, that was done at a time when they were kind of in the session, right?
I think.
I'm just saying, no, no one's gonna just kick their way into town.
To run a program.
You would have to, you know, it's just not gonna happen on its own, somebody would have to make inquiries and say, are you interested to various entities?
And, and there, there are childcare programs in town that didn't get called last year, and it's last, you know, in the, in August.
That depends on what happens, you know.
Of course.
Well, yeah, let's, let's stay focused on this, because we could go off in a myriad of directions here right now.
So what, if any, changes to the, um, the draft that we already came up with?
I, I just want to look at the question that is now the first question, something like, you know, Connecticut state law does not require. Town run before and after scho- school childcare programs to be licensed or regulated by the state, but towns can, I don't know.
I was, I was afraid, I was afraid to say, but.
Oh, you added to that.
Or add, um, towns may become voluntary licensed.
May pursue licensure.
I, I would be more comfortable saying they may be able to, I just don't know it, it as a fact.
But other towns are like, have licensed programs.
Okay, I don't know that.
Okay.
So all I know is that I know at least one of the park and rep, uh, commission members had mentioned that at a previous meeting, but I don't know if that's. Really a fact that I would be comfortable putting in there.
Well, what if you could, just for the sake of the conversation, because, um, C C M, we might be, what if we could get a fact? That says of the hundred and sixty nine municipalities, there are X municipally run childcare programs. Of those programs, X are licensed and X are not licensed, you know? So you're not, or you're just giving facts.
I don't know how quickly they, I mean, unless that's something they keep on there.
How does it help somebody understand this question?
So then, is it your understanding, are you aware of any town run childcare programs that are licensed?
Am I aware specifically?
Yeah.
And I have not looked into the issue, but.
I just figured in your work, you might just know.
No, you know, curiously, this is, until Bethany, this has not been a, you know, uh, uh. Uh, a matter of conversation, and like I said, how many of us knew? You know, I've been doing this for twenty nine years, and you know, and just, this is the most I've spoken about childcare, minister run.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, you know, because it just, it never came up, but I would think, you know, my gut's gonna say. There's, there's gonna be one, there's gotta be one.
Right, because, because the licensing website says that the programs are invited to apply, right? And it doesn't say you can't apply if you're a town or whatever, so, I mean, I, I, I would feel, I think without some kind of. Something added, it could lead some voters to conclude that the town can't be licensed no matter, even if they want to. And I think that's a problem, because it makes it.
I just, I just don't know whether that's actually true or not.
I, I, I would hesitate to put it on the explanatory text, but I feel a lot of stuff that what we're discussing tonight can be discussed at the town meeting on.
Well, I'm here to, to decide anything, and make it, I mean.
Yeah, for the, for the explanatory text, yes, but what is appropriate to be on here?
And then it turns out that's not an accurate statement. We, we're not gonna issue a.
But we don't know how quickly we could get any kind of verification, and this is.
Take time, but I seriously doubt they're gonna say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ever license you, or you're not able, you're. You know, you're not an entity that we deal with, they're not, they're not gonna say that.
You're talking about the state?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, you may be completely right, I just don't know.
I think then, if you leave it the way it is, I think it's, I think it adds to the confusion of the question, and I think it's a problem.
All right, I thought it was accurate, saying that it does not require.
Well, you could have accuracy that still, that still causes confusion to a voter, you know, I mean, I, I. I, I do think that there are people who are gonna.
I, I'm agree with what you said, if I knew it were true, just don't wanna write something that I don't know.
But you could look at the website right now, it doesn't say that, and that any program is not able to apply for license. I mean, the timing factor is always gonna be, um, you know, there's always a timing that's involved. Some programs get licensed more quickly than others, but, um, you know. There's no, there's no childcare group that, that cannot get licensed.
I know, let's see. But I mean, you're, you're saying that I.
We may have the answer.
Nothing definitive, nothing definitive from the state on that.
So I, I, I thought it was definitive, but when I went on to look at the website and it didn't say that. Certain groups couldn't apply to be licensed, it said anyone can apply to be licensed.
Okay.
Oh, I, I like that, I like that. Um, I don't know what I would do without. It's great.
I just feel there'll probably be a lot of good conversation on Thursday. And I think that I, I, I never know how many people are actually live streaming and, and watching and are getting informed and educated by the conversation that we're having tonight. And, um, like you were saying, you don't, you don't want this to be too laborious with words. But you want it to be succinct and, and, you know, um, because we're stating a fact. Current state law does not require town run before and after school program, uh, childcare programs to be licensed or regulated by the state.
Right.
It's, it's a fact.
Yep.
Right.
But I think when we have a conversation on Thursday, I think we, we elaborate the fact that it doesn't prohibit us. From investigating and pursuing being a licenser.
Well, so, for example, so, what it says here is, in Connecticut, municipally run childcare programs are generally exempt from state licensing requirements. Uh, specifically childcare centers or youth camps operated by municipalities are legally exempt from licensing. However, if a municipally run program chooses to, to participate in the care for kids subsidy, uh, subsidy program. It must adhere to certain health and safety standards, right? Uh, this includes passing an annual health and safety inspection conducted by the Office of Early Childhood Licensing Program. Uh, so, uh, so it's.
Yeah, but that care for kids thing, it's so different than what I'm saying, right?
But it's saying, so when you're looking at it from the statute, right? Because that's why I said, I think we would need to go to like a C C M, uh, to, cause they, they're gonna have the data.
And then the last line there, I would, I don't think is correct, it says municipalities don't have to be licensed, but they have to comply with all statutory requirements.
If, if you're in, in the child.
In the care for kids.
Maybe it's some kind of funding.
That's because there's funding involved.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but that, that doesn't really answer the question.
No, no, this is, exactly, it's not saying is, why would you be?
I don't think we can say it, because we don't know, if we had something definitive from the state saying, they do or we don't, then we could say it's fact. But we might be putting inaccurate information in.
What, I was expecting it to say what you were thinking, because quite frankly, I admit that, I, I believe that to be true.
I think it's confusing this way, I mean, but can we look at the question again to see if it needs any clear, further clarity at all? Because I think that the, leaving it the way it's been stated adds to, um, the confusion, I don't think it adds clarity.
I mean, cause it, it does state that in accordance with state law.
It says it twice, right? It says it twice, it says it in the question, and it says it in the next clarifying, we don't, we don't need to say it twice. You know, I mean, it's.
Well, it's just verifying that we are.
Yeah, I mean, I guess this was done for that, um, uh, lease question or whatever, but most of the time it's been referred to. There hasn't been this, as far as I know, because, um, or ignored it. Everybody understands it, you know, build the addition to the school or not build the addition to the school, or, you know, buy, buy this, um, fire engine. Or not buy the fire engine.
Right.
Nobody, yeah, I mean, don't you miss those questions?
It's like, they're, they're easy enough, but nobody needs to be like.
I think that, that lease thing is confusing, I actually.
Yeah, for the fire engine. And, 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 right, you start to get into a lot of legal lease stuff there, so maybe.
I had nothing to do with this.
Yeah, but I mean, saying, okay, so if it gets into a lot of stuff like, it gets in favor of a many lease vote yes, opposed to vote no, so it's. That kind of just simplifies.
Right, but if we look at the question that's on the ballot, right? And I know we've read it a million times, but shall the town of Bethany authorize Parks and Recreation Department to establish and operate in accordance with state. Law and unlicensed and unregulated town run before and after school care program? Maybe we don't need clarifying questions that don't clarify, in my opinion. I, I mean, is this, I mean, your very first question for clar- clarification repeats that this isn't in accordance with state law. I, I don't think it adds a lot or anything.
It is kind of repeating.
It is repeating, and I think, I think it does, I think it does add to the confusion for the reasons I've already stated. And I'm just kind of looking at this and wondering, can we just leave the question the way it is?
Yeah, or, or, you know, historically, the town has operated a, an unlicensed, if you vote yes. You're voting in favor of reinstating the program that was in place, you know? You know, because that's gonna give it the context of, or really what the petition.
Place of this.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, it doesn't address my concern though, it's just, you know, providing more information about the program. You know, it's, it didn't used to be licensed, it, we're not required to be licensed, but it doesn't have anything on my concern about people who think. We can't get licensed no matter what.
Well, the, no, I was gonna go, if you vote no, you're either not in favor of a program at all. Or you want the town to consider subjecting itself to licensing.
But now you're, 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 you're assuming what people are thinking, and that's not explanatory text, that's kind of assuming.
No, it's saying if you vote yes, then you want to go back to the history, historical way. If you vote no, then you either don't want it at all, or you want the town to consider.
Now I think we're making it more confusing, now, now we're going off into another realm and making it even more confusing.
This is why we, this is why we had the note, which then I guess couldn't. Incorporating to the question, but you're right, Gina, the, I don't have a, the way we've edited so far, I don't have a problem with the explanatory text. But it doesn't really provide any more information.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Let's think about leaving the question as it is and, and let people vote, you know, I, I.
Without, without doing an explanatory.
I think, yeah, I think when we first got here, Ben talked about, Ben talked about, um, you said something when you got here that I agreed with, which was.
Explaining the, the process?
You know, I just had a brain freeze, but.
No, I, I handed out pieces of paper, and we're talking about, like, why did the board change the question?
I mean, we, we could go on forever with this, with what power do we have to change questions, what, what are all these options, what, let's get into everybody's head, right? What explanatory text actually requires us to think about what, what a voter might be thinking? I honestly, I saw on Thursday that we would need explanatory text, and like, the more I look at this, and I think. We're probably better off if we just say, here's the question, let's go with it.
That's why we have this conversation.
Yeah, and I think. Marvin, one of you said, the question is not that different from what.
It's substantially similar.
It's substantially similar, and, and I, I just say, put in the question, let's not confuse anyone, because I could say. I think voters are gonna be confused for this reason, and you could say they're gonna be confused for that, let, let, let's, let, the question, I think, is fair.
Voters vote.
Let the voters vote, you know, I, I don't think, for example, in questions that involve. Let the voters vote, you know, I, I don't think, for example, in questions that involve leases or some other legal questions that someone like Bob said, could easily read the question and say, I don't even know what this means, I know how I wanna vote, I know the outcome I want, I don't know what question to pick, I don't know if I should say yes or no. I don't think we have that situation here, um, and I think that I was wrong on Thursday, I, I think I was.
That's why we have to have these meetings and talk, right? Because we don't get to do nothing until we talk about it.
And I actually thought a lot about this, I told you I would, I did, and I kept going around in circles thinking, I think if I add this, it sounds like, then I always had a balancing to do, and I'm like, this is stupid.
The more you think about it, the more confusing you try to make it.
Yeah, I think that's true, and.
What we've, what we've, what we've written to date.
We're striking the whole thing.
No, I was saying.
No, 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 unless there's action of this body, there's nothing, there's no conversation.
I'm sure people are gonna have questions on Thursday.
The explanatory text that we had edited up to, up to now, it really was just rephrasing the stuff that's in the question. So I, I'm okay with either having it or not having it, if you guys both want it, I'm okay.
I'm gonna make a recommendation that you don't have it, because the more, because if you believe it's clear enough, then don't muddy it up.
And you know, I, I'm gonna say, I am a little uneasy about this, I really thought on Thursday that this is confusing to people, right? But the more I thought of it, any kind of adding anything is even more confusing.
Right.
So, I mean, I appreciate your recommendation, and I mean, that's.
Does someone wanna make a motion?
Well, there's no action taken, and then there's no action that needs to be taken if you're not gonna have explanatory text, so you're just moved to adjourn.
I was just gonna say that.
Please, okay.
All right, does anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, second, and it's eight oh nine, we are now adjourned, thank you ladies and gentlemen, we'll have.
Excellent.